Great, okay, we're close. Very good, okay. Board, we're good. Staff, we're good, okay. Red light is on, we're recording, we're set, very good. Evening, welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. At this time, I'll ask if you could turn your cell phones either off or too silent, I don't want to do that myself, I realize I gotta do it. And in a moment, I'll ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can get this to be nice. I'm just one, that's not good. There we go, okay, please stand for the pledge.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so all five commissioners are present, Mayor Briggs will be attending via Zoom, is that still correct?
Yes, he's on.
Very good, okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay, moving forward. We have future meetings listed for the next budget meeting will occur May 16th, this will be unusual in that it's the second town council meeting that occurs in the month. Monday, May 16th, 2022, at 7:30 PM here in the town office and via Zoom. The Parks and Recreation Committee will meet on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, at 7:30 here in the town office. The Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the town office. And the town council will meet again on Monday, June 6th, 2022, at 7:30 PM here in the town office. Are there any other meetings to share? Hearing none, we move on. My hope is everyone's had an opportunity to read the minutes from the April 4th, 2022 meeting. Does anybody have any modifications or enhancements?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have one, okay, and it's probably my fault because I helped this individual sign in, but on page five of 52 of our agenda packet, under public comments. Mr. Brian McKenney lives on St. Joseph's Lane rather than DePaul Street.
Very good, okay. So we will modify that. Okay, anything else, sir?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, great, any other commissioners have anything to modify in the minutes? Hearing none is our motion to accept the minutes as modified. Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Burns' motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We now turn to the deputy for the sheriff's report, good evening. And thanks for being here on such short notice. Do you have the red button, is it?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Deputy Barlow, if anyone hasn't met me yet, I started here at the beginning of last month in March. I'm here to present the monthly report. So we had two days of annual leave and holiday leave, we had a day of sick leave between the two of us, so we're staffed with me and a DFCA halt. A special assignment, I had a property cleanup at 104 Wealthy Avenue. This month, we handled a total of 406 total calls for service, which includes three arrests, 162 directed patrols, 173 traffic stops, and eight of the wind cars, which are what's important now, which is just primary areas that we need to focus on. Some cases worth highlighting, we had a theft of numerous generators from the Rogers construction site, it was only one event, but we had three, they believe, three to four generators stolen from the job site overnight, they cut into the storage containers to cut the locks off, took them from the trailers and the buildings. So unfortunately, I don't have any leads on that or anything like that, they don't have any surveillance cameras. So I recommend recommended them getting surveillance cameras, whether that they'll get through with that, I'm not sure. And I also requested through the sheriff's office to all the patrol units to add it to our win, so to make checks throughout the night and early morning hours. And thanks Commissioner Davis, he said the fire department's also gonna flash their lights as they drive by and stuff like that, just to try to deter any activity. Also, I'm sure you guys have heard vandalism that we've been having at the community park. Spray paint on the trees and different, different things throughout the park. That's still, I'm still looking into that, we're gonna see what we can do with that, follow on all leads and see, see what we can do with that. But other than that, that's, that's all I have, and I'm, have any question, anybody have any questions?
Just thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving forward, return to the town manager's report.
Good evening, this is the town manager's report for March of 2022. I'll highlight some key areas with streets, staff cold patched some potholes around town, they power washed the message board in front of 22 East Main Street. They came in for a snow event in March, they took down one of the damaged Welcome to Emmitsburg signs on North Seaton Avenue. They trimmed some shrubs, trees and bushes along the creek bed on Creamery Road and removed the snow flags from fire hydrants. Related to parks, they continue to work on the board fence in Community Park. The contractor completed the tree removal project in Emmett Gardens as well as Community Park. Staff removed the graffiti from signs, dugouts, pavilions and picnic tables in the parks. They scraped and painted two park benches in Memorial Parks, trimmed, trimmed tree limbs around Community Park Dog Park. Pulled weeds and weed killed in Memorial and in Community Park, and they have opened all the restroom buildings, concession stand and dog park. For water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. We produced an average of 216,371 gallons per day and consumed an average of 217,499 gallons per day. The amount of backwater, backwash water in the month of March is about 11.83%. We purchased 438,400 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in March. For wastewater, we treated an average of 582,000 gallons per day and consumed 217,499, which meant 63% of the wastewater treated in March was wild water. We did not have any spills of untreated sewage, nor did we exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in March. We received about 2.2, 2.25 inches of precipitation, the average is 4.05, we are currently in a deficit of 5.60 inches over the last six months. That runs from October 1st to March 31st. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of May, except Memorial Day, trash will be picked up on Tuesday, March 31st. There are some of the meetings I attended in March, some noteworthy items, the staff worked with the contractor installing the new sewer service to 505 O2 East Main Street. The contractor blacktop, blacktopped the sewer line ditch on Creamery Road. Staff completed water and wastewater capacity management reports for MDE in the county. Staff continues to work with Frederick Stone regarding their tie-in of their lot and grinder pump. The storage tank levels at the water treatment plant have been adjusted and are now extremely accurate. Hydrant flushing, we conducted the week of April 25th and it was extremely successful. We did have some discolored water complaints in March unrelated to the hydrant flushing when staff replaced two curb stops on East Main Street and when the line was turned back on. And that's the manager's report for March.
Any questions for the manager? Thank you, any questions for the manager related to the report?
Commissioner Davis? Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Our, our wild water percentage doesn't seem to be going down any, we were hoping with the relining of the, of the lines that would go down, or is there something out there that's causing that?
It's still fluctuating, we have, whenever there's a large amount of rain that comes very quickly, you'll see an increase in wild water. We have two areas that we are looking at that we believe are contributing significantly to our wild water. And so staff is working on that with, with the areas that we believe
Okay.
are impacting it.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I had a question for Ms. Willetts, then on page 11 of our packet underwater, I was a little confused for well number three. May 2011's reporting 12 feet, March 30, so the
Negative 18.
That's why.
Yeah, it's negative.
I assumed, but I just wanted to make sure there, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff commissioners? Hearing none, thank you Ms. Willetts, we now turn to the manager's report. Sorry, the planner's report.
Yeah, this is the planner's report for March, I'm also gonna, gonna highlight a few key items. So I finalized the policy P2202 and the ordinance, which is before you tonight, I prepared the staff memo for the zoning map amendment. Grants, community legacy grant management, I submitted the quarterly report for fiscal year 21, completed the grant award and agreements for two projects. Chesapeake Bay Trust, we're still working with the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin retrofit design, I submitted a grant extension request. The county wants some more information, which has taken a little more time than we expected, the ADA ramp project, six construction inspections, two payment requests, two reimbursement requests, three payrolls. I prepared a contract addendum for extra work with, or for work with the extra grant funds. I finalized our grading permit with the county and we completed 122 ramps. Under the Main Street Communities Cooperative Fund, this is with the county, I applied for $10,000 in order to fund denied community legacy grant applications. MS4 for the feasibility study, I worked with the contractor on creating educational brochure, and I also started researching utility implementation. I reviewed and started transferring data for the implementation phase, I issued addresses for 47 vacant lots. Worked with the contractor and our attorney on the Cedar Avenue Swale Project, finalized the street sweeping RFP, and we put that out to bid. Code enforcement and permits, I processed 13 zoning permits, noteworthy for single family dwellings, three in Brookfield and one in Southgate. Processed 17 backflow preventer permit applications, I applied for a building permit for the new town sign, I also worked with the contractor on applying for the electric permit. For the town sign, worked with the county on getting the town sign approved because it's on a county property. I mailed one high hazard backflow permit required letter, attended a meeting with Amy at the Gessford Borough on the 15th regarding parking enforcement software. Met with code enforcement permitting software company on the 8th, 22nd, 25th. Prepared documents for court cases on Wealthy Avenue and East Main Street, Amy and I attended court trials on the 23rd and 30th, this was Wealthy Avenue. Planning Commission Pump Station Project, I reviewed the improvement plat for mayor and PC Chair signatures. Same with the Village Liquors for their corrected site plan and improvement plans. Federal Stone, I finalized the staff memo for their site plan. I also reviewed their final subdivision plan for final signatures, I met with Federal Stone and Visit Frederick County on the first regarding fast tracking their permitting and also business incentives. On the Reuters project, I continue working with their engineer on sewer construction specification approvals. Emmitsburg East Industrial Park 2, I met with the town manager and potential developer of their lots five and six. We reviewed a final forest conservation plan for the mayor and planning commission chair signatures. Zoning map amendment entrance of Brookfield finalized the staff memo for the, the planning commission meeting, and I also had a planning commission meeting on the 28th. Miscellaneous, we do various website updates under the planning department. Provide information to sewer and water superintendent to update the sewer water capacity plan with Frederick County Health Department. And as always, there's our updates on our new businesses and developments.
Thanks, sir, any questions for the planner related to his report? No, very good, okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward, thank you. Okay, at this time, we now turn to the commissioners for commissioner comments. Commissioner Burns?
Good evening, short and quick, we, if anybody was present at the last meeting or reviewed the last meeting and my tangent on the elementary school. We followed that up with a meeting with town manager, town planner, and the mayor and I all met with via Zoom the Frederick County Public Schools staff. And talked with them at length and brought, I think, a lot of things to light that they didn't realize was going on at the school, nor did they realize, you know, certain issues with walls and things of that nature, so it was a very constructive conversation and we're now on their map and radar for improvements coming in the near future.
Great, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ritz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to thank, I'm assuming Ms. Scott, actually. The agenda packet looked great, there was a summary of every agenda item, that's something I remiss, well, it's okay, sorry. Or Zach, whoever, thank you, I noticed in our agenda packet and I noticed it online, so I do appreciate that. That said, I also know that Ms. Willetts has been out of the office on vacation, which that's good, good for you, I'm still concerned though. It seems that we have a very small amount of time to review documentation. You know, we get our packets on Thursday, it gives us the weekend to look over things, to formulate our questions and to be prepared for our meeting on Monday. I do realize that some of the ordinances that we approve at the agenda of the preceding meeting have to be vetted through the town attorney, gonna look through things. So if we can't get them in time, maybe we can look at other options, potentially extending them out another month, just to give us, I would hope at least a week to review some of these documents at a minimum. That's speaking for me, I don't know how everyone else feels on the matter. And finally, an update on the Frederick County Elementary Band Event, thank you Commissioner Sweeney for graciously suggesting the Lions Club to sponsor that event. At our bandstand, however, Thurmond Elementary School was chosen for the site, if anyone interested, that's on May 18th at 7:00 PM. The Lions Club offer was appreciated though and will be considered for future events. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Davis?
It was a very quiet month, I really don't have anything, that's a good thing.
Wow, thanks. Thank you, sir, Commissioner Sweeney?
Yeah, I just have one, we had our citizen advisory meeting this month. Mrs. Essex, I don't know if everybody remembers Mrs. Essex, she interviewed everybody for her project she had for branding the town, she would like to come and do a present PowerPoint, well not, if the town would let her. Sometime in summertime when we get through all the budget stuff. Okay, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, I attended the Maryland Municipal League meeting last Thursday in Middletown. The MML theme, one was representative from Frederick County Government Jessica Ellis. Forward a harm reduction program, and the basic premise is there are a variety of services and offerings from Frederick County Government to help individuals with basics such as like ceasing cessation of cigarette smoking to dealing with opioid addiction and a whole spectrum between those regarding harm reduction. It was a good presentation and I will hand over to staff at the end of the meeting, the resources, so it's available in the town office for anyone who would care to see it. Moving from there. MML again for staff. A representative of MML shared that on Tuesday, June 14th, that is municipal staff day. If individuals from the town intend to go down and see, that would be a day that they could visit, and I think there's a a fee break or something of that nature for town staff on that one. Next item, they presented, for lack of a better term, a bill to us about Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
You're connected to the town meeting?
Connected to the town meeting.
Okay, are they muted now? Great, okay, thank you. So for the MML piece, I think we owe, according to them, $200, I'll provide that to staff for you to investigate, oh, it has, okay, they didn't have a record of it at the time, so I just sat there quietly and smiled. Final item for MML for commissioners, they're looking for individuals who want to hold MML office. And yes, that's exactly how I felt, so if there's an interest, please contact our MML office in Annapolis and they would be happy to see our shining faces there. Fred Rock Disc, the Disc Golf stewards expressed concern regarding the vandalism in the park and they said they would be vigilant to keep an eye out for who's there and maybe what they're up to. They said they had some photographs and I asked them to forward them to the deputies, so I hope that has happened. And beyond that, I believe that ends my comments, so thank you. Okay, now at this time, we turn to the mayor, Mr. Briggs, we turn to you.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, five by five.
Oh, good, good evening, thank you, I appreciate you allowing me to zoom in. As you'll, that'll make times for the COVID thing, that's, that's unusual. Just really quickly, a couple of things, as Mayor Burns, I commit, excuse me, Commissioner Burns stated, we did meet with staff with, on the phone with Frederick County Public Schools, I think we got the, some information radioed why we're not getting a lot more of attention up here to our, our elementary school and the orders are in the water on that, and we have things we're gonna do, we're gonna follow up and have a visit by their staff up here. I attended the Knights Easter Egg Roll on Sunday, April 10th. Special meeting with the town manager on evaluations on April 18th. About St. Mary's University College of Liberal Arts Symposium, April 20th. And the St. John's and Apple Center Pay Symposium with also at 8:30 AM or the 21st. And the, the 10:30 AM Mount St. Mary's University College Advisory Board meeting, it was virtual. Last minute cancellation with Ken Vaughn, daughters for charity, he was ill for that luncheon, a lot of things are coming up and yeah, at this summer, I, first of all, I, just so we get this going. July 4th is, would be our scheduled meeting, and I'd like to propose to you, although we moved that to July 11th. And make that out to the public. The end of this week, I will have David Trover on my podcast. He is the congressman for our district. And I will also offer that to anybody else who is running for office as we go on. And, and in May also Carriage House will have their official grand opening on, on the 10th. And all their new, they totally remodeled their first floor, bathroom, added a bar setting and and not, and also the extensive improvements they made the outside, it's just so good to see everybody investing in Frederick County and in our town. Carriage House, Mother's Seat and School, I'll make a visit there and I will also meet with the president of Woodsboro Bank, hopefully later this week. I think that's it, thank you. Oh, did I get everything, yes, I did, thank you.
Thank you, sir, at this time, we turn to public comment. I'm gonna go in order. I'm sorry, with, I'm struggling on this one. Don Shorba, do I have that correct? Sorry if I got it wrong, sorry if I got it wrong. Okay, so I'll ask if you could please identify yourself, list your home address, and the floor is yours. There you go, yes.
My name's Don Shorba, I live 115 DePaul Street. Been in Emmitsburg all my life, 75 years old, that's a long time. My subject or topic is I live at 115 DePaul Street, there's a supposedly, ever since I can remember, 65 years, a right of way behind my house. That 101, 111, 115, which is me, and 121, use it, it's the only access to the back of our property. It's, it's actually grass. When I moved there, it was a swamp and it was grove shut, I called the town this, if I could open it up, and they agreed to it. I've been maintaining it for 49 years. Twice in them 49 years, well, one time it was a swamp bagger. There was a four wheel drive pickup truck stuck back there, they brought another one in to get it out, took me a couple of days to straighten that out. And just recently, some people that live there on Federal Avenue decided it was a road and they could do there when it's a swamp. And I gotta go down there and haul dirt in, I've hauled probably six pickup loads of dirt in there to fill up that swamp. And I called the town, they was okay with everything. They've given me a permit to build a garage area, they gave the guy 101, whose name's May, a permit to build a garage here, and that's your only access, we have your garage. I don't use it for a garage unless my car breaks down or something, and I gotta get in there and fix it. But I've been maintaining it all this time and just getting tired of people tearing it up, and I asked about the town doing something. They came back and they blocked it off at two spots, and I can still actually access my property. But 121 needs to access hers too. Which, if they just move, if they just move that up a little ways where she could still get to her property, it'd be one way in, one way out. Unless you can figure out a way to keep the people from 35 federal from coming over in there and running through there, I even put stuff out there when it was wet, he got out and moved. Whoever went back there and put the signs that's up there now, I heard they came out and gave them a bunch of. But I don't want it blocked off, none of us do, it's our only access to the back of our lots because none of us can get through from the front. I'd just like to see if something could be figured out that we could still use it but not be a throughway, you know? Because I'll continue to maintain it as long as I can. Well, my one neighbor, she's not even part of it, she lives in the suburbs behind, she knows part of it for me. All good people, and I'd just like to see all of us be able to continue, we don't use it very often, but we do need it to get there, to our properties. So if you can all think on it and come up with a solution to keep everybody happy.
So in a perfect world scenario, would you want gravel there?
No, I called the town and I was gonna actually pay to put stone in there when I opened it up. And they said if they had to dig a pipeline there.
Okay, so is that what the issue is for staff?
There's water and sewer lines that run through there.
They said if they had to dig it up, they wouldn't be responsible for the stone. So I never put the stone in, but I hauled pickup truckloads of rock and stone and broke up cement blocks, because it was, it was a pond there when it when you're in the middle of DePaul Street, you look like you're in the middle of the hill on the road, if you go around back, it's like this. Comes right to my lot and it runs right straight out there and it causes a pond. I've got it cleaned up a lot when it's not really rainy, but right now you go down there, it's gonna be a little muddy. I don't know who's got, who don't have enough sense not to drive through there, but some people don't. But I'd like to see it where we can still use it, but not be abused like that, because I'm getting too old to be hauling dirt. That's kind of all I got to say, I said, do what you can do. Try to keep everybody on the street happy if you can.
I know we'll try to, I know that we will follow up with staff on this and we'll, I will get back to you, myself.
Okay.
Follow up to see. I would, I will need to learn more of the history of it and understand more of the infrastructure piece, so I definitely want to hear what staff has to say.
I do know there's a pipeline in there, and it's been actually a right of way for at least 75 years, at one time it went clear to Flatiron Creek.
Okay.
But it's been blocked off there at Federal Avenue.
So staff, I'll turn, bless you, I'll turn to you staff for a moment. Two right of ways, a water right of way and a gas line, did I understand that correctly?
I have to look into the right of way, but it is, it's town owned property and water and sewer lines run through there. And there's a big concern of the lines being damaged because it is grassy. Okay. And, but, you know, I'm, we can look into it some more, but there are some ongoing neighbor dispute issues.
Okay, it's never, it's never been torn up enough, I was there, actually, when they put the water line down, it's never been torn up enough that you're gonna get down that deep. My problem is just tearing up what I'm trying to maintain.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you coming in, and again, I'll follow up with you.
Where the apartments are? Behind Hollingers? I was just trying to picture where it was on.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next, for public comment, we turn to Eric Sloan. And again, if we could ask you to identify yourself, your address, and the floor is yours.
Eric Sloan, I live at 500 East Main Street, Emmitsburg, Maryland. Two big things tonight, one is some form of passive traffic control on Creamery Road, you know, give it some thoughts because over the last 10 years, I'd say more and more traffic's going through there and it's a school zone, 15 miles an hour is posted and whatnot. But somebody doing 15 miles an hour through there is a rarity. Because it's picked up a tremendous amount of traffic, people that come off 15 or headed to 15. You know, you can always do like those giant speed bumps and go out and film it for stupid videos on TV, but, you know, that's not what we need. You know, that's not what we need. And the other part is where is Emmitsburg gonna be in five years, ten years, twenty years? Need all of you to figure out what you view for it in that period of time and how we're gonna get there. Eventually, you know, we'll run out of water, we'll run out of space for sewer and we'll run out of space to put people. Yeah, it's, you just have to figure out where we're gonna go and how far we're gonna get there. I mean, we're only about thirty years behind the ball on that design. For those of you who remember Columbia, Maryland, when it went in. Many decades ago, everything was drawn out on paper before the first things were really dug up. They had it all and we can do this, we're gonna do that and it was all set. So it'll, it'll, you know, bring the haphazard. Development under control. That way we don't worry about running out of water. We don't worry about sewer water. And part of it is figuring out where all the wild water is coming from, which most of it is probably somebody's drain system. That has never been corrected, that's coming into it. In some cities, it was a standard Washington DC, Chicago. Your your drains ran into your city sewer, but that was by design. Here it's not. It's just something that never got caught. Buildings that were made back in the the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds that did it because it was a thing to do. It's not anymore.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Return to Mr. McKenny. Do you want to reserve your comment till when we talk about the past? Or do you want to do public comments, sir? Just curiously?
Yeah, that was an error.
He should be under.
Okay, alright, so, okay. Thank you. Mr. Song. Oh, very good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Parrot. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Again, we'll ask you to identify yourself, your address, your home address and the the floor will be yours.
Very good. It's an honor to be with you tonight. I'm Delegate Neil Parrott from Hagerstown, Maryland. It's twenty thousand five Lindenhurst Court, Hagerstown, Maryland. And the first thing I'm gonna do is hand out a end of session letter along with a brochure I am running for US Congress. So here's.
Sure, no worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so where I serve as delegate is actually going to be the area that's representing Emmitsburg now that they've done done the new map. So. It's a two member district. There's one open seat and that's me. I'm not running for a delegate again. I'm running for US Congress. And so you've got Bill Wyville, who's the incumbent, and then you've got William Valentine, Seth Wilson, and some other person from Washington County. Don't recall right now, but those are the ones running for that seat. I'm glad to be able to represent Hagerstown, that area for about twelve years in the roundhouse of delegates. I do want to talk a little bit about the maps today. The first map that was passed by the Maryland General Assembly, whether you're a Democrat or Republican, this map was a gerrymandered map. Joe Biden won all eight congressional districts. People who I've talked to in Montgomery County, who are for fair elections, oppose this map. They actually signed the referendum that I led in two thousand and twelve, put their names on signatures and opposed the map at that time. Thankfully, I took this map to court. Judicial Watch was the attorney that served with me. This map is gone. It's. The judge called it an extremely partisan gerrymandered map. This is now the new map. So with the new map, all of Frederick County finally is put back together as it should have been the entire time. They respected political and geographical boundaries. That was the, one of the linchpins of our lawsuit. Was that it needed to follow Article three, section four of the Maryland Constitution, which says that each congressional district will be compact. Will respect political and geographical boundaries and will have roughly equal population. And this map accomplishes that by putting Frederick County all together. And you see, we have all of Garrett, Allegheny, Washington, all of Frederick. And just the top part, most of the rural part of Montgomery County, it does go down. You can see it grabs Gaithersburg. That's what that little bulge out is, is to grab, gave this, we got Germantown and Gaithersburg that goes up. And it's actually, if you look at polls, predictive models, this is a very, very competitive map. It's, they're calling it a toss up election, depending on which group you look at. And so. I'm just honored to be able to be here tonight, introduce myself to you and just to say, I'm really thankful that. The judge did decide it. Of course, it was Parrot versus Leone was the court case. And I think because of that, Frederick County is going to have a large say in this next election. You guys are actually going to have a chance to choose the next congressman. And I would just ask you humbly to vote for me as you consider those votes this coming November.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Very good.
Great.
Grateful. Thank you. Sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I did hear the mayor talk about a podcast. He's probably still listening. I'd be interested in being on that as well.
Mr. Mayor. We'll get on the message.
Very good. We'll carry that. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
I had him at the door and I guess he will be invited.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time we move forward to our administrative business items. The voice from beyond. Staff, could we kill the mic for a moment on the podium? Is that possible? Thank you. Sorry. Alright, so. First item on administrative businesses, presentation of proposed work to address flooding issue on. The Eugene Myers Community Park Walking Path. Staff, we turn to you.
I actually, the. We talked about it at the last town meeting to make some changes. To the flooding at the rear of Community Park Walking Path. And I believe Mr. McKinney came in with some ideas that he wanted us to look into. And through Commissioner Ritz, he was able to send us about three or four different items to help possibly alleviate alleviate the. Flooding. And I believe he's here to kind of give his proposal to the board.
Great. Okay. Mr. McKenny, come on down if you would, please. Mr. McKenny, press the button for your power. There you are.
Brian McKinney, thirty four, Saint Joseph's Lane. I have put together what's that? I have prepared or put together some points and topics and everything else like that. I don't know if everybody has a copy of it. Do you guys have a copy of it?
No, no.
No, unfortunately. Okay. This is gonna be fun to do with the phone. I think it'd be better if I just briefly go over every topic. The issue with the flooding primarily exists only when we have. Either runoff from north of us, Pennsylvania, north of mountain coming down. When it doesn't rain down here, rains up there, it does flood down here eventually. Makes its way, mitigates its way through and gets to us. Or when we have a rainstorm, those are the only two times that we really have a flooding issue problem. I did bring a suggestion for a bridge and I do have that in these notes. Hopefully you all will be able to get a copy of it and review it. The bridge idea is, I think, a little bit extreme. It's a little bit too much for that. I would rather invest that money into a project somewhere else. Beautify the park, do that. I have gone back there the last three weeks when it rained. Found out where the water lies, where it sits, the best place to channel it off. Those areas are gonna be to the west of the East Eugene Park to the west and then running from north to south along the farmland. Along that that pathway, the easement that the town has in between farm and the park. Going down toward, I believe that's Tom's Creek. If we could channel that water between the two spots together and then bring it along that line, along that farm line. It's a lot of work, but it it will solve the problem. It'll bring the water table down. And even if we do get a storm, that water level will not rise up. As well, the ideas for solving the problem. Part of that digging a ditch, also putting in maybe an eight inch berm, a foot wide, sixteen inches wide. That run alongside of the path to keep the water to that west side from traveling east into the golf course and over the path. Another idea was to make the channels underneath of the path to bring it through to where the golf course side is. I want to stay away from that because we're just, we're ruining the golf course by doing that. As a matter of fact, if if we can get it. To a good system of water mitigation and getting that water to channel away. I would actually propose to get rid of the drains that are underneath of the path that go toward the golf course. So that we can ease the water off the golf course and make that much better. Be able to get in there, you're not playing disc golf and getting money by the time you're whole five completely trashed. So that that's a kind of down the road idea. Also bringing in plants, bringing in different water associated or water thriving plants. That will also bring in or bring back native species, indigenous species of birds, butterflies, insects, things like that. We can definitely turn this into almost like a botanical park or like a botanical path. With animals, plants, everything else like that. But butterflies, monarchs, things like that, those plants can help ease the water as well. Take up the water. And then I think the. That encompasses pretty much all the ideas, the exception of the bridge that we had discussed. Bridge I want to get away from, but digging ditches, the berm, retrenching and working on that. I think is gonna be the best idea. I have prices, rough prices. And those prices are based on possibly doing this as volunteer, getting the community together. Getting a crew of people together, a group of people together and tackling this problem. It's not something that I think we need to bring a contractor in for. I don't really think, now you guys would definitely educate me on this. Planning permitting and everything else like that, insurance liability, those resources and everything, obviously I'd have to ask you guys. On that permission, but I think I feel at least that we could accomplish this as a town. And get rid of this problem, not spend a lot of money, maybe thirteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Fix it.
Thank you, sir. Question?
So my apologies, I just sent it to you. I had slipped my mind, but I sent you his his plan. And he he covered everything that was in this, his plan.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to, I I met with Mr. McKenny. We we took a couple laps down down at the park and he gave me some ideas. And I put them together into that bulleted list that you see. It was all him, you know, I I just put it in a nice bulleted form, so.
Horrible with words and I apologize.
No, 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 it was, it was great. And it's, it was, it really helped me, really helped me going there and seeing visually how how he envisioned. His plans.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Mr. McKinney. Wayne Slaughter and his wife will be very interested in helping plant too. They they brought this to us a couple years back, I think. Planning new species of plants to help with the water problem. So they they'll be very interested in planting. They're helping with the tree planting now.
We can definitely choreograph as well on that plan out paper that I have. I would also love to attempt to get ahold of Arbor Day out of Annapolis. See if they'd be interested, maybe four H Boy Scouts. Different associations, groups that are around here. I actually believe Frederick County has Arbor Day. I think a location in Frederick County, I believe, I would have to look. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
How much, you've obviously done extensive research and thank you for that. And I, you know, I've obviously been back on the path and know exactly what you're talking about. How much of that runoff is coming from the from Fairleigh Farm? And then, well, the only reason I bring this up is because obviously Fairleigh Farm is for sale right now. And if and when they plan to do major structural renovations to the land and everything like that. We can obviously hope this holds for right now, but I know from past, you know, places I've lived and stuff like that, when major construction happens. You know, delegates where water goes and stuff like that. If it, it, do you, do you see it coming from the farm or from somewhere else? Something like that. I just, I would love to see this fixed now, but I would hate to see two or three years down the line at Fairleigh Farm. Does sell and they start doing major construction, then all of a sudden it's completely run over.
The best of what I can see from hiking back there and from Google Earth. It hiking back there predominantly. I would say sixty five percent of the water is actually coming from the top of. And or behind Lincoln on the park and the edge of where Welty Road turns into Hampton Valley. That corner all comes down and channels along that farm.
Yeah, because Hampton Valley will flood sometimes and heavy rains.
Everything else in front of Lincoln on the park, but also as well behind. The farm now, if you look at it from Google Earth, that farm is actually raised up. It's only maybe, I would say forty five to seventy five feet tapers off. On the north side of the farm and on the east side of the farm, about forty five feet tapers off. The rest of it all goes back toward Tom's Creek.
So then my my question for you, and I don't know, price wise, from a town's perspective is. So obviously we have the right of way on that town property there. Would it be possible from where that water is standing to dig? An irrigation ditch that runs to Tom Creek or is that too far?
That would be an undertaking in itself, but from what we had looked at and what I've researched. And what I've put together inside of my head, we can actually tie into a lot of the channels that have already been dug. In the golf course and that already mitigates, that already goes back toward Tom's Creek. So if we can get in between that property where the path is and where that property line is. If we can just channel back toward, I believe it's like hole fifteen or hole fourteen. There's a huge channel that comes down that hill and then starts to run toward Tom's Creek. If we can tie into that.
Yeah, and that's why I ask, is it, it's one of those situations would, if we did something of that, if we did that project, when Fairleigh Farm is developed. Are we setting ourselves up to hopefully not have?
You're not setting yourself up for failure.
Right, but setting ourselves up so we didn't have to do it again.
But it, the one thing I would challenge you on is to make sure that the topography of that farm. Stays in a step going south toward Tom's Creek. It doesn't turn. If you, if you turn that property just a little bit.
Yeah, it's gonna all run around him.
It's all coming into the.
No, I appreciate your research and and everything for it. That's, that's awesome.
None for Mr. McKenny, I guess. What are the next, what are the next steps?
So what I'm thinking is we kind of took a a quick look at it also to try to get some options for us. Mr. McKinney, would you be willing to walk back there with our staff? I'm thinking he might get mad at me tomorrow morning, but Jimmy Click, send him back there and maybe Zach would be willing to walk back too. So we can get a better idea. Of your, of your plan. And and understanding of of your thought process and then we can go from there, figure out which plan. We will get ahold of you tomorrow. We've got meetings first thing in the morning. And then somebody will get ahold of you and see what time, but is there a time that works for you?
Anytime before, say, three thirty and after four o'clock.
Okay. Yep, we'll reach out to you tomorrow.
That's it. Mr. McKenny, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Okay, we turn to our next administrative business item, which I'm going to be the point person for. I'm on a budget. I'm handing a map to share. I'm talking about a connection between yellow and red following a contour line. I have one for the staff. So at this time, I'm seeking permission from the town to connect the high point of the green trail to the high point of the yellow trail. It would be about a quarter of a mile. What I'm designating there on the map is a corridor. The goal of having a corridor is that way if you run into something sensitive or that has to be avoided, we go around it. So. I'm asking that we, the board, if you would, accept this. Proposal to allow. Trail to be created there. The advantage of ads is instead of having on the green trail, trail where you go out, you do a loop and you come back on that same line. It would allow someone to do a full circuit and that would give them the opportunity to have a longer time in the woods. And a better hike, a better ride, a better experience, you know, when they're out there. So that's, that's my goal at this time. So I would hand this over to the Vice President. And staff, do you need a motion on this before I totally hand over the reins to Mr. Sweeney?
I have a question.
Sure.
Because I I think we know, already know this, but I just wanted to clarify it for for sake of the meeting. Any work done on this trail, it's all volunteer, correct?
Yes and no. The bulk of it would be no, um. The maintenance would be volunteer, there would be some volunteer work to set it up. But I would work with um a professional who we have at this time budgeted money for the, the maintenance and promotion.
Okay.
A budget for the trails, uh and the re- and the person would be um the individual, the company we've worked with, not the individual, but the company we've worked with before. Who's done the maintenance for the trails in the past three years and they're, they're beyond reproach. They go all, they consistently go above and beyond.
Okay.
Uh, there would be a volunteer component to it, absolutely. But there's some things out there that I would like them to do because in my view, it might require some machine work. And were that the case, they would come into staff, they'd present uh all documentation necessary and liability and whatnot.
Yeah.
Uh, staff would have the final say regarding their being allowed to do this.
You're just looking for a green light from us tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, that's.
I need a, I need a motion to accept a, a new quarter mile long um section of trail to be linked to the green and to the yellow trail.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, second by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any names?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We turn now to our consent agenda item. Uh, at first, first item we turn to is uh reappointments. Staff, we turn to you. Do you want me to read it or?
Um, this year for Commissioner Davis's uh Parks Committee, uh if you want to read it or I can.
Good.
Oh gee. Uh, he's requesting to reappoint uh Shannon Cool, Glenn Blanchard, Sandy Umbel, Steve Starliper and Amanda Ryder to the Parks and Recreation Committee with a term of December third, twenty twenty-one through December third of twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to accept these reappointments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? No, sorry. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero.
Just one quick comment on that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm really excited to, to finally be able to get this committee together post-COVID, because we've never really had true meetings through all this and they were appointed right when COVID hit. And uh, they got a lot of good ideas and a lot of things they want to make happen, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, second consent agenda item. Um, again, I will hand the gavel over to Mr. Sweeney, the Vice President of the Board. That's a proposal for trail volunteer workdays. Uh, the days would include, and I have a lengthy list here. Uh, the goal of these days is to get the trails prepared for Community Day when we anticipate a lot of riders uh visiting the town. The proposed days are uh, May fifteenth, May twenty-second, May twenty-ninth, May fourth, and sorry, June fourth, pardon me, thank you, and June eighteenth. Um, I skip Mother's Day and I skip uh an O'Donnell family birthday and wedding anniversary for fear of death. So um, these are my proposals.
I need a motion to accept the volunteer workdays for proposed by Commissioner O'Donnell.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now turn to the Treasurer's Report.
Today, this is Treasurer's Report for May second, twenty twenty-two. This is the cash activity for the town of Emmitsburg as of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. We had a cash balance on April first of seven million, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We had deposits in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Withdrawals in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve. And that left us with an operating balance forward of seven million, three hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty. The top ten checks are listed below, and if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to ask. I will make one comment, I'm going to clarify this with Zach. So some of these checks that we write are also reimbursed through different grants and things of that nature. So you're seeing some of the ones for the ADA Ramp Project, those are actually paid for with a grant. We have to write the check first and then we receive the check later. So seeing some of these larger numbers for, you know, close to seventy thousand and things like that, that's not coming out of our budget. It comes out in the beginning and then we're reimbursed through the different various grants that everybody's received.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do we need a motion to accept the report?
No, I'll just add that the SCADA for the thirty-one thousand, four hundred is also grant.
Okay. Any questions for staff or the Treasurer? Hearing none, we move forward. Thank you. Return to the Planning Commission for their report.
Yes, Mr. President, the Planning Commission actually did not meet in April. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May thirty-first due to the Memorial Day holiday. Um, I'll report a summary of that meeting at our June sixth town meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We now turn to our agenda items. Our first agenda item is the initial presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Staff, we turn to you.
Uh, good evening. Actually, I will turn it over to the mayor to summarize the budget. And then Cole, I believe, has a few words after that.
Okay, uh, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell, did I make clear about the uh moving the July fourth meeting to the ele- July eleventh?
Yes, sir. Yes, you did.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, you got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, thank you. And those in attendance, uh, I'm presenting my budget for fiscal year twenty-three. This is a summary of that. The, in the general fund, revenues are estimated to increase by eight percent. A hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars over the last fiscal year. And uh, those numbers start out a million, nine hundred and seven thousand and eighty-six dollars and up to two million and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. That's an eight percent increase again. Town budgeted services charges revenues are estimated to increase by two hundred and thirty-six, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty thou- fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars in fiscal twenty-three. Mainly to an anticipated increase in pool revenues. Uh, notice received concerning the county's tax equity increased slightly to four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Only uh, one, this is disappointing, one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars more than FY twenty-two. This is still less than the town received in two thousand twenty and twenty-one. State highway funds increased by twelve thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. As the board already approved, the, the tax rate for the real estate taxes remained at a current rate of point three four six four, four hundred thousand assessed dollars. Water revenues are budgeted slightly higher in FY twenty-three to five hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which is an increase of approximately four thousand dollars. Sewer revenues are also budgeted, budgeted higher this year at one million and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is an increase of approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. I'm requesting a five percent COLA for the tax staff in light of recent inflation coupled with the great resignations uh for the quotation mark. Uh, we've had experience with our sewer uh water uh trends. Plant is imperative for the town to retain employees. The annual inflation rate for the US is eight point five percent for twelve months, any March twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, the highest since December nineteen eighty-one. According to the US Labor Department. The five percent COLA is recommended to help offset other employee rising costs like food, gas and housing rent in the local market. The Frederick uh federal government has determined the COLA for FY twenty-three to be five point nine percent. Also, I recommend uh is a one to three percent merit performance increase based on individual employee evaluations. Which uh, I, I've worked with the town manager on last month. Budgeted general fund expenses before the capital funds transfer is, is increased by a one hundred and two thousand, two hundred one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars or six percent. Total budgeted cost went from one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six fifty-six to one million, eight eighty, oh six, eight, six, seven. Let me read that again. One million, eight hundred and eighty thousands, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars before capital funds transfer. Increases are seen in each of the departments except for public safety. Capital fund transfers for FY twenty-three will be a hundred and seventy-two thousand, three fifty, which is up from FY twenty-two of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Budgeted water expenses have gone from seven hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars to seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Budget sewer expenses have gone up from eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, two ninety seven, ninety-five to nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Please review, and if you have, would have any specific questions or requests, please contact staff before the next meeting on uh March sixteen. That way we can be sure to address your questions. Uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Um, any immediate questions at this time now that we've received the budget? Yes.
One quick one, pages thirty to thirty-two that are in process, uh distribution will be prior to the budget meeting. Is that, is that the next?
So that's the, the pages that you're missing are the water and sewer capital improvement um project uh budget. And we just got some new information in today, so we didn't, we're not able to finalize the numbers uh for that. As I anticipate having it done within the next two or three days, I'm going to email it to you as a board. And then we'll also give you sheets, put in the budget um prior to, or at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And I'll turn it over to Cole.
And again, if you have any questions, certainly reach out to, to um the town manager or myself and we'll try to get those answers to you as soon as we can and, and certainly have those prepared for everybody the, during the formal presentation on the sixteenth. Um, just want to thank the staff quickly, to thank the mayor and Kathy and um all the department heads for all the hard work they've you know, they've uh contributed to putting all these numbers together. So we look forward to making that presentation in, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll move on in a moment. Thank you, greatly appreciated, Mr. Taylor.
You're, you're having a nice night.
Uh, the layout is, I know we went through a bit of a process three years ago to kind of modify and to get it more user friendly. It's absolutely more user friendly, so thank you. That's very much appreciated. And I know that most of that was your effort, so thank you, sir. Okay, we return to agenda item number two. Um, review and approval of the Saint Euphemius Wayside Exhibit for Consideration.
So this will be uh Ms. Shaw and the mayor's presentation.
Good evening. This is agenda item number two. So before you tonight, um, I'm just going to give a brief background. The past couple of years, staff has been working on, under the mayor's direction, a historic walking tour for town. To date, we have installed eleven wayside exhibits, which you would see along Main Street or South Seaton Avenue in town. And they just highlight the historical, um, historical sites that you might be looking at. And so for this one, we are reviewing exhibit number twelve, which would go, oops, up here on DePaul Street in front of the apartment building. Um, and here's another site, so we're hoping to put it right here in front of the apartment building. And this is the exhibit. So as I said, this would be exhibit number twelve. It'll be placed at fifty to DePaul Street. And this is being funded um half by the town, half by a grant from the heart of the Civil War, War Heritage Area. And then after this exhibit is created and installed, we will do two more exhibits to finish off the walking tour and then create a brochure and have a little website about it. Um, and the mayor had wanted to highlight this site because of the historical, the historical significance with integration. So as the exhibit says, um, Saint Euphemius School was integrated in nineteen forty-four and Brown First Board of Education was in nineteen fifty-four, so it was ten years prior. Um, and that's based on documents from the Daughters of Charity, um, their archives. And so tonight we're requesting if the board has any edits to the exhibit or if it's approved, we will send for fabrication. Um, our intention is to have it installed by June fifteenth of possible. Are there any questions?
Does not appear to be any questions.
Didn't have any?
Not sure.
Any, any issues? Okay. No, I just, for clarification, I had some ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
I did hear back from Ms. Shaw today, uh, some historical questions that I had, and she did share those with me. And I'm sure she can share them with everyone else if they're interested. Regarding, regarding the, some of the names on the sign and um years and things like that.
Were you satisfied with what you, the responses? I mean, did you?
I didn't get a chance to read it entirely. Um, just like I said, I just got it this afternoon, but um cursory view of it looked, looked pretty, pretty satisfactory.
We're looking for a motion to accept, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Thank you all for, this is a really significant point and I, I won't belabor it, but uh uh, my uh, I wrote a I'm just gonna leave it there. Thank, thank you, but it's a uh, we're very closely with the Daughters of Charity. For this, thank you, and their, and their archives. Question, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there a motion to accept the Wayside Exhibit for the Saint Euphemius School as presented? Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion? Second, thank you. Um, all in favor, sorry, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Please say nay. The motion carries five to zero.
And sorry, real quick, I just wanted to thank the Daughters of Charity and the Maryland Room with the Frederick County Public Library for their assistance with this. And then um, as I mentioned, we have two more coming, which will hopefully come before the board and met, or July, at the July eleventh town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we now turn to agenda item three, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one, which will incorporate the board's findings, motion and vote will be presented in writing to board for approval and execution. And we turn now to staff, uh, Mr. Golden.
Yes, one second, please.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so at your last meeting, you approved the zoning map amendment for the uh, two parcels at the entrance of Brookfield on Timber Mill Run. So Leslie needed to go back, put your findings of fact into ordinance form and um then present it to you tonight. So I'm sure you had time to read it through. It's just basically um what we discussed at our last meeting. So I won't go through every single exhibit or anything. Um, we just need approval of this and then that's set in stone. So you technically approved the zoning map amendment at your last meeting. This is just the, the specific details that need to be in ordinance form.
I make a motion to accept ordinance fifteen dash oh seven.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, sorry, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, sir. We now turn to Agenda item four, I'm on page thirty-seven to fifty-two.
Yes, so this is for policy P twenty-two dash zero two to update parking fees and fines. Uh, just a little bit of background, the last time these were updated were in July, two thousand and eighteen. So we are asking the board to modernize the parking fine schedule. So first, we added, um, a proposed five-year parking plan. So I'll just read through this, just so the public's aware, we worked with the mayor and Kathy on this parking plan. So current to the end of this fiscal year, we purchased parking enforcement held hair handheld device and software. Um, this is going to provide a more efficient, effective and legal issuance of parking tickets. This will allow the online payment of parking fines and parking permits. We would no longer need to issue the little permit stickers. Uh, so that's a big plus for us and for the residents. We are looking tonight to update the parking code to allow parking boots, allow electronic payment via software vendors, allow payment of parking tickets, fines, permits via the town website, and update meter hours, update location of meters, et cetera. We will discuss this in our next agenda item. And also to update and modernize the parking fee fine policy. From the July first twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, we are looking to purchase two parking boots and accessories. This is an estimated cost of two thousand dollars. And the real reason why we want to purchase the boots and utilize boots is anytime we have to tow a vehicle, it costs either the resident or the, um, visitor at least two to three hundred dollars. If we boot the, the person, it will only be a fifty-dollar boot fee, so it's going to save whoever's getting towed a significant amount of money. Um, from July first twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, we are looking to purchase a hundred and thirty new digital meters to replace existing mechanical meters on Main Street. This is an estimated cost of sixty-six thousand dollars. We no longer are able to repair our current outdated meters. I spoke with the meter representative, and he couldn't believe the kind of meters that we have, that just, they don't exist anymore. So we have no other choice but to replace them with digital meters. At the same time, we want to contract with a vendor to accept electronic meter payments on the new meters. This will cost nothing to the town of Emmitsburg. I spoke with Gettysburg, and eighty-five percent of the payments they collect right now are through that, the mobile app, um, devices. So like pay-to-park and et cetera. We are also, uh, looking at selling three oh three West Lincoln Avenue, the proceeds to be used towards municipal parking lot. And then we are looking to purchase a property from a municipal parking lot. Um, estimated cost is unknown. Staff is still researching potential locations. We reached out to the elementary school, Frederick County Public Schools. Um, they are unable to sell land, however they are willing to lease land. Not sure if that's a good or a bad thing, it's something we're gonna have to look into. Um, twenty-four to twenty-five, we need, we are looking to install thirty-two digital meters and seventeen poles at the community pool parking lot. This is a cost eighteen thousand dollars plus new pole installation, estimated cost. Um, and also this, during this year, we're looking to engineer the municipal parking lot project. Estimated cost is forty thousand dollars. From twenty-five to twenty-six, uh, we're looking to construct a municipal parking lot. Estimated cost unknown at this time. And then twenty-six, twenty-seven is just our yearly permit enforcement costs. Um, the total estimated costs are over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So it's a significant, plus the unknown cost for the municipal parking lot, so it's a significant cost to the town. Are there any call, uh, questions on the, the parking plan? Before I move on to the?
Mr. Sweeney?
Well, this hundred and fifty-three thousand, uh, one hundred and forty-eight dollars going to our capital projects?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Capital projects, would this go into our capital projects fund?
No, it'd be going to the general revenue. General fund.
Uh, even though it won't be completed till twenty-seven?
You talking about, I'm sorry, you talking about the municipal park?
Parking lot, yes.
So more than likely, um, any, any monies you have left over from the general fund then get transferred to the capital improvement fund? So with monies that are left over, then we will put it in fund two essentially to build up to be able to do this project.
I didn't know if we had to put a line item for it when I'm at for our new budget.
We probably will, um, create a line item in, in fund two under, uh, Department Thirty for municipal parking lot when it comes to that.
That's my question.
Okay, Mr. Ritz?
I know we've had some damage to, um, our current meters. My, my one question would be with the new digital meters, what kind of cost are we looking at to, to repair any of those that receive damage, neg- negligence from, you know, vandalism and such?
Uh, Ms. Nell knows the cost. I believe it's approximately two hundred and fifty dollars per meter if there's significant damage.
Okay.
We do have a lot of cameras throughout town now, so we may be able to, to catch the people that, you know, doing kind of vandalism.
The contract with the vendor to accept electronic meter payment, it says no cost to town.
Correct.
Could you elaborate on that?
Sure, so the pay-to-park or other kind of softwares, the, the, say, for example, students would mostly use this. Um, they would pay, they would put ten dollars into their account, and then there's a, I think it's twenty-five cents per dollar that they would charge. We're still looking into different softwares, but that was the most common, twenty-five cents, thirty cents per transaction.
Now, will the new digital meters still accept coins?
Yes, they'll still accept, uh, dimes and quarters.
Okay, um, you mentioned um, school property potentially for the municipal parking lot. Do we have any other ideas? Because I've, I've heard some rumors floating around that the, um, the, the old car dealership was going to be purchased by the town. Knocked down, use that for a lot. I have a question regarding the lot next to the Chronicle Press. I know we talked about that before. Um, I still don't know who owns that property. I believe it's no longer someone in our meeting tonight, uh, but I have no idea, because when you go to the Maryland GIS, Frederick County GIS, state records, it does not show who that belongs to.
That particular property, yeah.
Um, that would be an ideal spot. So whoever owns that now, do they have plans for that? Because that's a perfect spot for me.
We haven't, that, what you just said was news to us. Um, I wasn't aware of, of that property, and as far as I know, the old car dealership has been purchased by someone.
Yeah, there was an auction for it, and they purchased it, and they keep cars in it.
Okay. So we really don't have any ideas right now. We're looking for feedback from the board. We're just, we're looking around.
Okay, it's tough, it's really. Then the plan goes up to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. I see each year there's a parking enforcement software estimated yearly cost. It's, it's, it's static. I see no inflation. Um, assuming it's going to be static up until that date, but we're looking beyond that, too. Um, as long as we have these digital meters, we're going to be shelling out money every year for maintaining this, um, software, correct?
No, so I probably didn't do a good job explaining what that is. So instead of Amy writing handheld tickets now, it's going to be an actual handheld device that has a printer on the top. So, for example, if she scans Frank's, um, car, the, the tag on the back, it'll come up that he has a parking permit, so then she can just keep moving on. So that's why we no longer have to issue the little parking stickers, so it's going to make her job more efficient.
Okay, but the software that to, to, to run said machine that Ms. Nell would have.
Correct.
Have to pay a certain amount each year.
Just, yeah, just that machine.
Your plan, it's only a five-year plan, but obviously it's going to continue. We'd have to maintain the software unless it's purchased like, um, you know, it's like for.
So we kept, we kept it stagnant, could potentially sign a yearly con, or like a five-year contract or a three-year contract. So not knowing what we're going to sign, we just kept it at this amount going forward. Obviously, we all know inflation.
Yeah.
The amount's probably going to go up, but with having this device, we're also not purchasing, uh, paper tickets uh, for her have to, to every year also. So there's that reduced cost.
And it's a, really, it's a convenience factor for those, you know, wanting to purchase parking permits and those want to pay their uh, fines via phone or via the website. They can just go on our website and pay everything. It's going to save staff a ton of time having to take payments all the time. Um, and it's really convenient. Like I said, eighty-five percent of Gettysburg's people do it that way. So, but I understand it. It has nothing to do with the parking meters, though, that software. That's separate. So once we purchase that meter, that's ours.
Okay, no, you put the software to operate that machine.
Sure, yep.
Um, that's all I had, I'm sorry, on the, on the plan.
Okay, just two quick questions.
Mr. Burns, yes, sir. Can and will boots, if put on, can they be removed on the weekend, or is that going to have to be a Monday through Friday thing?
That's something we're going to have to discuss with the mayor. Um, that would have to be Amy or myself or Jimmy coming in, um, removing a boot.
Yep, and then, um, just from a budgetary standpoint, just kind of thinking ahead, if we didn't have the, uh, the numbers for the parking meters this month, but I, I quickly look back at last month, where we did fourteen eighty-four. Multiply that out over the five years, you'd be roughly around ninety thousand dollars minus when we take away for Christmas and stuff like that. So in theory, half the budget for all this can be covered through the mirror, uh, the meters, correct?
That's correct.
And if we do, I'm jumping ahead to an agenda item, if we do raise the prices slightly, that'll bring us more so. At the end of the day, this could be like a washout.
We think it's going to be budget neutral.
Okay.
So actually, on page thirteen, at the very bottom, is the parking enforcement for this month. Yeah, no, it got squeezed on the bottom. Um, the total is, uh, three thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Yeah, so.
I have a question regarding that, though.
We've, okay.
Okay, the parking ticket money for March of twenty twenty-two was two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. I went back to the last year, and on average, it's, it's, the average amount was only three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
If.
Why was there a four hundred and seventy percent some increase?
If you recall, we did not have any parking meter enforcement in twenty twenty for COVID.
From April twenty twenty-one through March of twenty twenty-two is the.
Okay, go ahead, Zach.
Looked at. Yeah, so, you know, like, like, um, Kathy stated, we did not have a lot of parking enforcement during COVID. So Amy went back through and cleaned up a ton of old tickets. So we received a, a lot of money that month for cleaned-up parking tickets. People had outstanding parking tickets for two years. So we sent a letter, and then they, they send in their money.
Okay. But are we looking at twenty twenty-one, twenty for March of twenty twenty-two? Are we anticipating that roughly, that amount? Is that, is that part of our, part of the equation for increasing our fees?
What was the question?
Are you asking, is the month where the collections came in, is that being used as our baseline for comparison for future?
Yeah, so obviously, we're going to exclude, um, COVID months because we didn't generate so much this month. So, so, so looking at March of twenty twenty-two, that was, you said, ticket cleanup. Are we anticipating that amount in ticket, um, revenue? Or was that just a, a spike that month? It might go down a little bit.
That was a spike. It will decrease slightly. I can't give you an exact, I don't want to tell you twenty-five hundred, and then it'd be.
Yeah.
You know, four thousand, but it's, it's not, I don't think it's going to be that high.
Okay, I mean, that really jumped out at me. That's great when it does. All right.
Anything else, Mr. Ritz?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, a couple items. Are we intending to take meters up Main Street toward the Doughboy? I know Mistress Sweeney had asked about that in the past, in past years. Are we intending to expand metered parking?
It's, it's in the future plan. Uh, the initial five-year plan, it wasn't put in.
Okay.
We, we want to slowly integrate. I, I think we added the pool parking lot um, in the five-year plan, and then we can look at expanding after that. Um, either further down East Main Street of, or West Main Street or North Seaton Avenue. Those are all options. Right now, we just started with the pool parking lot, um, because that would be a huge undertaking to begin with.
Yeah, plus, plus the cost of the municipal parking. We, we thought the municipal parking lot would be more important than expanding on West Main Street at this time.
So when someone goes to use the pool during the, the swim season, do they get a pass to park? Or do they have to pay for the metered spot?
No, so how we wrote it in the, the ordinance, let me just go to that real quick. Okay, so it says, which we'll get to this point, but since you brought it up, it says, um, community pool parking lot, the community pool parking lot shall be restricted to pool patrons from May fifteenth through September fifteenth from noon to seven PM. This is the pool season. Um, parking for pool patrons during pool season shall be free, so Amy will not be going to that parking lot during that time.
So in the morning, though, they would be metered?
Okay, correct.
Um, next item, and this goes back to our, um, comprehensive planning, um, signage. I don't see anything here related to signage regarding indicating where off-street parking is, and I thought that was one of the things we're really trying to coordinate. I know we don't have a municipal lot, but I knew there was, I had thought there was discussion that we were intending to come up with a sort of a, a wayfinding program, at least for parking, and I know that in the comprehensive plan, that's something that we had committed to. So is there a piece here that I'm missing, or is that something that's going to come forward, or?
Yeah, definitely, if you approve, if the board approves the community pool parking lot tonight, um, that's something we will add to Main Street and possibly on North and, and South Seaton Avenues, that, that is a designated, uh, parking facility.
Great, okay. Um, and sorry, and I mean to drag this out. I'm going to say these words out loud, and I, I'm not saying these for the sake of comedy, but, um, compact parking garage, is that in consideration for a municipal lot? It's a heavy investment, but I think in the long run, it might serve our needs to have something that's, you know, perhaps usable, but definitely usable, sorry.
I think everything's on the table. Everything's on the table if we find a, a decent lot.
An appropriate piece of land.
Appropriate piece of land, all right.
And are we looking for like a walking shed for the, for the squares at our price, on our premises?
Yes, so the mayor and I were researching, you know, parking garages and parking facilities, how close it needs to be to your central, uh, square, and usually it's about three blocks.
Okay.
So that's what the parking manual states in Maryland.
Okay.
So we're looking for somewhere in, within three blocks. Obviously, closer would be better.
Sure, okay.
One or two blocks would be preferred.
So from the board, to move forward collectively, I'm done with my personal questions. Procedurally, what are you looking for from us, a vote to accept the plan?
Another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Mr. Sweeney, I apologize.
I'm sorry, um, the, for Saturday and Sundays, will this, will parking be free? Or will we have a code enforcer for Saturday and Sundays?
It's in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, but it goes from eight to eight.
Sundays would still be free. Um, that's what we're proposing. Saturdays, uh, we would, if we have staff on a Saturday, usually once or twice per month, would be Saturday coverage.
Um, how about the time, you're changing the time to eight, so?
We're recommending eight to eight.
Is there a reason why we have to have eight to eight? So that we would have code enforcer your day to call?
So, yeah, Amy starts her day at eight AM. Um, we, we decided to go with eight because neighboring jurisdictions such as Frederick City and Gettysburg all have eight to eight hours. Your main businesses in Emmitsburg are open past eight o'clock, you know, your restaurants, your, your main restaurant facilities, so we want to make sure that turnover keeps going and that people can still go to these establishments. If you looked up town tonight, past six o'clock, it's packed full of, you, probably about residents. So we want to make sure that there's patrons that can still keep, continue to feed the, uh, establishments that we have here.
Or residents, if they don't have a.
Right.
A bag on their car. So I, I was going to bring this up on the next point, but I'm, I'm concerned, um, who's going to cover for Ms. Nell? I know she's not going to be working twelve-hour days, six days a week.
She, she'll stagger her hours. So one day, maybe she'll come in a little bit later, not eight o'clock. Um, then she'll work till eight.
I mean, are we?
She'll still work an eight-hour day.
Are, are we looking at backup? Are we looking to designate that to the deputies? Because in the next ordinance, there's a lot of reference to police, police, um, in that.
So the deputies have always had the authority to write parking violations in town.
Correct.
Um, so, yeah, they, they can fill in where necessary and, and, you know, I'm not, we're not looking for any overtime to enforce this, and it's, you know, she goes out and a couple hours a day and comes back in and does her other work, or with the pool being open at the farmer's market and coming in for a couple hours on the weekends. No, you're not going to have twenty-four hour or twelve-hour coverage.
Right. I, I guess, I don't know why, then, why are just because other municipalities do it, why are we, why are we so focused on the eight to eight then if we're not?
So she comes in at eight AM. Um, that's when, and we all start, that's when the office opens. Uh, eight PM is to keep the turnover, um, along Main Street to keep people moving, you know, through, so other. So other patrons can get in, so other residents can get to their places. That's why it went way eight o'clock. Um, again, this is just what research staff has done. It's not set in stone. It's just what we've, we've researched and this is what we've recommended. And we're just, you know, looking for your input.
There might be a way to beat the system too, though, you know, if it's staggered, I'm just saying if it's eight to eight.
But you'll never know when she's here.
Then I figure it out, though, you know, I mean, it's, cuz it's, it's hard to enforce that.
Mr. Ritz, there's always a way to beat the system.
And I.
There always will be.
Right. And I know the deputies, yeah, I know the deputies can do that, but I highly doubt that that's on their priority list of.
In the deputy's contract, I thought they were not going to do ticketing and enforcement like that unless it's an extreme circumstance. So I thought that's part of what the, the town's purchase of coverage involved. So we might need to review that because, um, Mr. Ritz, just bottom line, are you looking for a second staff member who has the authority to cover?
No, I was just, I, I, I was just concerned. I, I, I didn't, I didn't wanna work Miss Nail to death there.
In reality.
Seems like a long day.
Any, any staff can write, I, I could go out and write them, or Zach could go out and write them. So there's always somebody here that can do it.
Okay.
Um, it's just Miss Nail's primary responsibility.
Job duty.
Yeah.
But in, in the same breath, Commissioner Ritz, you, you think about it, would it also generate more revenue for parking permits? Because people that would normally take advantage of the fact that the meters finish at six o'clock, would they then be purchasing permits to park on the street from six to eight o'clock? With the idea that the meters are running?
I, I don't think you can answer that. You, you, you don't know.
Right, and but that's the, that's the double-edged sword, you know, you're kinda, you're floating on there is that, yes, we wanna see the turnover. But is there potential for additional revenue coming in from the parking permits during that time period as well?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Okay, so board, we've got, we've heard, I believe from virtually everybody who's gonna weigh in, Mr. Davis, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in yet.
Yeah, I will, real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of the new meters, uh, increasing the, uh, the, the fees for, for parking. I, I just need some more time to digest. This is a lot of information, a lot of changes. You know, I, I, I do have a problem with the, I think I have a problem with the overtime parking fee going from ten to twenty-five dollars. You know, Mrs. Smith runs in to grabs, uh, something, a pickup order at the Odd House or the Palms and doesn't have a quarter and comes out and has a twenty-five dollar ticket. I don't think that's helping our businesses at all, uh, compared to somebody that we put a boot on. And we put a boot on for a reason because they have probably hundreds of dollars of back parking fees and only cost them fifty bucks to get the boot off. Uh, I, I just, I just got, I, I just need to, to look at it more. And then we throw the Jake break thing in, I wanna do some research on that. Uh, it's just, uh, I don't know. I, I, I like a lot of it, but there's some, I just, I, I'm not ready to vote.
Thank you, sir.
And Commissioner, uh, O'Donnell, that we expect that. This is a lot of information. This was a first-time, uh, pass of it all. So we didn't anticipate, um, it being tabled tonight.
Great, okay. With, with that in mind, um, Mr. Son, I see that you've signed up. I can't read your writing and what you said for the topic, so I'm just gonna assume that it's parking related to the proposed five-year parking plan. So could you come forward?
Sure.
Identify yourself, your address, and we're now in the public comment, ladies, this agenda item, and if we could set the timer and.
Donald Son, uh, sixteen Upper Trail in Fairfield. I have the tattoo shop on the corner to West Main Street. Um, so regarding the budget, the only, what I just heard, please correct me if I'm wrong, there was no increase in quote-unquote safety. The mayor said, was that, does that fall under, we're, we're, I'm sorry.
I, I know, it relates to the parking.
Okay, all right.
So, so enforcement is my question.
I did the parking and then.
Yeah, so if we're expecting the deputies to do that, um, but we don't, the only part of the budget that didn't see an increase was that, that doesn't make sense to me. Number two, I agree with Commissioner Davis said about hundreds of dollars. What is the criteria listed in your paperwork? What constitutes being able to put a boot on somebody's car? Is that listed in that paperwork? What criteria, you have two hundred dollars, whatever, like, I'd like to know what that means. I'm with Commissioner Davis on this, there's a lot of questions. So I'm happy to hear that's being tabled and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'll answer just this question real quick. The contract from the sheriff's office was reduced significantly by twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. It wasn't the town cutting any funding for enforcement, it was the sheriff's office contract reduced because of changes in personnel.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
And then second question about the boot is addressed.
I was gonna say, this is just the parking plan. I still am gonna give my presentation on the fees and the.
We, we added.
The ordinance.
We put four and five together.
Do you want me to read through?
It feels like we've done that, yes. All right, so let's look at number four.
Sure.
In this context, the intent of the board this time is to table this, is that correct?
I, I would, I would like.
Or, four is the fee policy.
Okay, so.
I, I say for going to table the ordinance, I, I would feel comfortable tabling the policy as well.
Okay, so.
And then just do it all as one package.
The intent is now to table agenda item four and agenda item number five. All right, so is there a motion to that effect?
I, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Burns to table agenda items four and five at this time. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Sweeney.
Zach, did you say you're gonna make a presentation on this?
Yeah, I can present this tonight. It'll be probably fifteen minutes, and then it kinda, it might answer a lot of your questions.
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so.
Well, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, go.
So just, any other questions or comments regarding this item?
No, I think overall, I mean, I have a lot of questions, and I, I think that, um, the presentation that follows, is following and then, you know, waiting another, another month, I would feel more comfortable in my vote.
So for clarity of procedure, then, here's what's gonna happen for the sake of, we're all on the same page. We'll, we will be making no decisions. We will not be voting on either agenda item four nor five tonight. We will hear the presentation for approximately eleven minutes from Mr. Golden. And then, uh, we'll move on to our next agenda items. Everybody satisfied by that?
That works for me.
Very good. All right, so let's now turn to the vote. All in favor of, of tabling agenda items four and five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five to zero. Okay, Mr. Golden, we turn to you for your seven minutes.
Yes, so one thing I wanted to, to go back with is the parking software. So the new parking software, you know, we're really trying to push people to pay via our website to save, uh, staff a lot of time on doing that. Also, there's an incentive, the fee to pay via credit card on our website will be four percent. The town currently charges five percent fee for credit cards, so it's an incentive to pay, um, your fee via credit card. Um, just briefly over the, the, uh, policy. Like I said before, June two thousand eighteen, this was four years ago, inflation's been crazy. Um, we are recommending increasing overtime parking, restricted parking, failure to park between lines, left side parking, uh, parking for forty-eight consecutive hours, and the non-electric vehicle parked, parked in E V space to twenty-five dollars, and then if it's, you paid after, after twenty days, it will go up to forty. Um, the more significant, important, um, safety hazard such as parked by a fire hydrant, we're requesting fifty dollars and sixty-five. And then the snow emergency route, forty to fifty-five, and then parked in a handicap space, fifty to sixty-five. So going to section B, um, this is still gonna be your cheapest bet. So for residents, if, and visitors get a parking pass, it's gonna be your cheapest option. They're still extremely cheap. Um, we're kinda looking to increase these on a, from present to two thousand twenty-six, so it's not gonna be hitting everybody all at once. Um, from present to June thirtieth of this year, there, the current rate is five dollars a day, through, uh, sixty dollars for three months, and then hundred and fifteen for six months. Uh, between July first twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, that will increase to six, sixty-five and one-twenty. And then from two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-six, nine seventy and one-twenty-five. And then from two thousand twenty-six indefinitely would be twelve seventy-five and one-thirty. So the parking, in addition to any third-party fees, is paid via vendor. And C, parking meter fees, we're also looking to gradually increase these as we are significantly low in the area. Um, it's currently ten cents for twenty-four minutes and twenty-five cents per hour. We're looking to gradually increase that. Um, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty cents for twenty-four minutes, and then fifty cents per hour. Twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty cents for twenty-four minutes, seventy-five cents per hour, and then twenty-six to indefinitely forty cents for twenty-four minutes and one dollar per hour. Again, it's significantly more cheaper if you purchase the permits.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I say do away with the ten cents.
Do away with the.
Make it a quarter. Or whatever it's gonna be for the hour, when you, when you part, part for, you, you pay for an hour, uh, that's. Who wants to use a credit card for a dime?
Right.
Or, or for forty cents.
Twenty cents, yeah.
And I, 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 that's just my opinion, it's something for you all to think about, but.
What was that again?
Just do away with the ten cents.
The dimes.
The dimes, and make it, when you put money in.
It's a straight hour, not fractions.
Oh, just for the hour, okay, yeah.
Because change, first of all, change, uh, uh, some of the business places that I did get to talk to today, uh, you know, they don't even wanna give their change out for parking meters anymore because the bank is limiting, limiting them to what they can get.
Right.
It, it's, it's crazy, uh, the, the one business I talked to said they get, usually get, uh, a thousand dollars in quarters, and now they're only able to get three hundred dollars a week. You know, he's running around to different banks trying to, to find quarters. It's, it's crazy.
That makes it easier on us, actually.
Yeah, it, it does, and, and so.
Yep.
So see, I'm not against it all.
And then for the D, parking boot fees, uh, you know, we didn't wanna charge an arm and a leg for the boot removal fee. If we're here, it's not really, it's hard, it's not hard. It takes about five to ten minutes. I was looking at the videos. Um, so we're looking at fifty dollars, like I said earlier in the presentation, if we tow somebody, it's gonna be between two to three hundred dollars, so it's gonna be significant savings.
Can I make a comment on that?
They pay their fee?
I'm sorry, fifty plus their parking tickets.
Mr. President may make a comment on that.
Yes, sir.
I, I thank you for that. Um, you know, we watched the video and he said, it doesn't seem like it'd take, so fifty dollars to remove a boot. But then it's a hundred dollars if someone doesn't pay a water bill, just to turn a, you know, like the turn of water. I know it's apples and oranges here, but I'm just saying, there, there's an example of, if you, that was reasonable, um, approach, looking at that, saying that fifty dollars, cuz it's really not that hard for the guys to do.
Sure.
You know, someone didn't pay their water bill and it gets shut off.
But, but in the same breath, it's fifty dollars, plus you have to pay up all your back fees for your tickets. So in, in reality, overtime, forty plus, I mean, you could be up, upwards of, how long does it take to put a boot on? How many tickets?
Three, at least three.
Is that, is that what our threshold is?
It's three. You're at a hundred and twenty in, in the back fees there, plus the fifty, so you're at one-seventy total.
Seven, well, seventy-five, maybe, if it's just overtime.
Well, I mean, I.
Depends if.
Depends on how long.
Oh, after the twenty days, because they get the boot, it would, yeah.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And Mr. Riss, I'll throw this out just to be a prickly pair. Uh, when water gets turned off, that's two visits, when it gets turned on, so it goes off, it goes on. So you have two staff visits, just saying.
Then you get a shut-off notice.
Right, but then.
And your water's turned off.
Right, then it is shut off, but I'm saying, it requires two staff visits.
Plus the internal.
When you restore it, and then, when, before you restore it, when it gets shut off. So that's, I'm just saying, there is some reason for a fee that's strong like that.
Okay. Point taken.
Okay, uh, Mr. Golden, any more for your presentation related to the, um, agenda five?
So that's everything. Do you have any feedback that we can bring back to you on the?
I think the only modification would be Mr. Davis's twenty-five cents eliminating the dime issue.
Yep.
Anything else that staff would wanna see modified?
Not modified, but the reference to third-party fees if paid via vendor, is that the credit card fee?
That's the credit card fee.
And the boot replacement fee, what, what was that again?
So you, you see kind of the worst-case scenarios on T V and YouTube that if someone tries to drive off with the boot, it's gonna completely destroy the boot. So if they destroy the boot, it's gonna be, you're gonna have to pay to replace it, which is about a thousand dollars.
Okay, that was my next question. I said, I, I know that's probably a dynamic.
Yeah.
Price there.
Where someone has a welder, like a TIG welder.
Exactly, yeah.
Knock it off.
Creative removal.
And once you take this home, if you do see that certain lot, certain things jump out at you, I mean, certainly email Zach and I. Um, so we can keep working, you know, towards it, so when we bring it back in probably July, um.
Does anybody else have a problem with the twenty-five dollar parking fee, or the ticket?
That was your other modification, sorry.
Hmm, yeah.
So would you wanna recommend fifteen dollars?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I just think that's an awful lot for somebody that just doesn't have a dime and just happens to be in the wrong place at the wrong time and runs in to get something, or runs in to get change, you come out and they got a ticket.
The, the, I think the, the counterargument to that now is that you're gonna be able to use your credit card.
But not everybody does.
Right, I'm not, not, not disagreeing.
Right.
I'm not disagreeing.
I'm talking to people like me, have trouble using this thing. Um, but, um, I don't know, we still wanna keep the small-town atmosphere.
I, I hear you on that, the overtime parking, but then there are the other things that are, you know, like parked by a fire hydrant, I think they should get nailed for. Um, so that should, that should be a, a steep fee, and then parking in a handicap space. The snow emergency route, there is one too. I don't know how that's enforced, but I, I see that a lot, like during the snowstorms. So people park on the square, and then our, our, our staff can't, um, I know it's difficult for them to, to, to do any plowing and, and whatnot when people are parked where they shouldn't.
Mr. Ritz, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Golden, sorry, thank you, sir.
I was just gonna say, Amy has to come in late some nights and really early some mornings. That's not the purpose of the fee, but it's just, there's a lot of staff time behind it, and also it's a lot of pain for our public works staff to have to, you know, plow around.
Exactly.
Oh, you could move that one to a hundred dollars. I don't have a problem with that.
So that's what I'm saying, those.
These are, for the, for the, those other things, uh, you know, the block and the fire hydrant, the thing like that, you put them wherever you want, I don't care. I mean, we've always wanted to bust one of those windows down, put the hose through, but we've never had that opportunity. But, uh, you know, it's, uh, those, those fees I don't really care about. It's the.
Overtime.
It's a parking ticket.
I'll, uh, just share, the only thing that I see here is Thurmont's overtime is thirty dollars and sixty.
And sixty, yeah.
Thirty and sixty, and Frederick City looks like it's twenty-five and fifty-five.
Gettysburg's twenty-five and.
Okay, that was that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but anyway, we're open to suggestions. It's just based off the research that we did.
So the next time, sorry. So the next time we, rather, is the intent to bring this back to our next meeting, rather, our first June meeting?
No, not till July.
Till July. At that time, will you expect to have feedback from the commissioners related to the fees? Or do you wanna address those fee suggestions in that July meeting?
Uh, it preferable if we can do it ahead of time, uh, to send us your feedback, comments, concerns. Um, and then it gives us a direction to work towards.
Okay.
And, and hopefully then we can come to some sort of agreement with the board going forward.
So board, are we okay then with that framework of, of, of that timeline? So before the July meeting, weigh in with what your perfect world is regarding the fees here, and, uh, we have.
Definitely, yeah, I, I just, I, I didn't, I'm, I'm sorry, I did not have the time this weekend to get my questions all together for you. I was just gonna address them tonight, but I'm thankful that we are tabling this, but I will certainly.
Sure.
Pose those questions to you in a timely manner.
Okay, so Mr. Golden, anything more for agenda four, or can we go to?
Sounds like there's consensus on the dimes, and then we'll listen to feedback and.
So for agenda five, do you wanna provide a summary just again if we're tabling it, or do you feel that's necessary at this point?
If I could give a, um, fifteen minutes.
Seven minutes, we got. Are we good? Here's a Jake break, just, uh, an overview.
As long as we're out before eleven fourteen.
Oh, don't worry, we'll get it.
Eleven fourteen.
We're almost done.
We were here last.
Oh, very good, yes, eleven fourteen, all right.
And this will probably answer a lot of questions in the, um, the gallery too. So the first thing, uh, at our last meeting, the deputies stated there's a problem with Jake brakes in town. So we reached out to our town attorney and she drafted the engine brake rule. So these are referred to as the Jake brake. Um, no person shall operate a motor vehicle equipped with an engine brake in the town unless the engine brake is connected to an appropriate properly functioning exhaust muffler system. So, long story short, the state of Maryland does not allow us to prohibit Jake brakes. Uh, so there's kind of a, a little, you know, way we have to go around this. So not around it technically, but they can still have these Jake brakes, but if they have a, a modified exhaust system, then the deputies can, can get them. This would be a deputy enforced only. This will be a deputy enforced only. Let's see, stationary violations is lawful to public, park on a public street or public property, and they can be issued a a fine, just cleaned up that section. Double parking, again, we just cleaned up that section to the owner, maybe issued a violation, a violation. Two-hour parking, we just added the sentence of the owner of the vehicle in violation of this ordinance may be issued a citation. Reserve parking for rechargeable plug-in electric vehicles, we removed the fine from the ordinance and we're gonna add it to that policy that you looked at previously. Parking on public property, we, it's unlawful to park on the same, in the same spot for more than forty-eight hours. This is, doesn't matter if you have a parking permit or not, you have to move every forty-eight hours. Violations, penalties.
On that one, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
How how are we gonna enforce that?
Chalking tires. We've always chalked tires.
I just paid forty-two dollars to have my car detailed today. Don't go talking about tires.
Oh, don't worry, it's just chalk, just like playground chalk. It won't hurt your tires. Like Gettysburg, they use something that really harms tires, but we're, we use playground chalk. And with the new system, no more chalk. It's an automatic chalk system on, like, take a picture, and then it sees your valve stem, and then you, no more chalking tires after May tenth. So that should help that problem.
Yeah, they've used that before.
Mr. Mr. Davis, does that answer your question?
After the tenth, you'll never see chalk in this town again, because that's when our new system will start.
What is the school?
Except for my kids.
Exactly, yeah. Penalties, violations, it says parking citations, you know, there's different areas you can pay by mail at our black box, then we added by credit card on the town website. Operation of parking meters on page start forty-three B, we just added B, C, and D. We added that electronic payment will now be accepted by the town. Let's see, oh, we also added it shall be unlawful to park at any parking meter space when the meter is not properly functioning, including when a meter fails to display a signal showing legal parking in a period of time remaining. So if you pull up to a parking meter that is not working, please move to the next space or move somewhere else.
I can see that biting us. I could see somebody having, causing problems with that.
Yeah, so what happens is, especially with the meters we have now, people are used to putting coins in, you know, digital meters and not turning the knob. So they'll call us up and they'll say, you know, we just got a ticket, my meter's not working, we'll go out, we'll put a quarter in it, and we'll turn the knob, and it will, it will work. So there's directions on our meter that you have to turn the knob, you can only put one coin at a time. So we want to make sure people just move on to the next space.
What if there is no available next space?
Yeah, I mean, somewhere.
I I that's gotta be on the town too, to make sure that our meters are working properly.
Yeah.
I I don't, I I don't know, that that one's.
I gotta think about that one more.
Okay.
It's not uncommon practice, though, that when a meter's broken, you're advised, move on or suffer the consequence of a ticket. I mean, that's, I would argue that's probably the first ticket I ever got was something like that, saying, hey, bonus, and it was not a bonus.
I'm I'm not used to parking in digital parking spots either, so.
This was an old attorney guy down Delaware.
Alright.
Yeah, this was a long time ago.
Alright. Alright, so duties of police officer and or parking enforcement officer, we were moved at police headquarters in B. Basically is pay at the town office or other designated locations. Let's see, use of coins, and we added here electronic payments received. So when we do have those stickers on the meters for third-party vendors, we can accept that. Went to the next page, forty-four hours of operation, staff and the mayor are recommending we change the time from nine to six to eight to eight, eight AM to eight PM. Designations of zones, as we stated previously, we're recommending we add the community pool parking lot as a designated zone. We did include safeties of language in here, so people that are going to the pool do not get ticketed. Violations, penalties, we just added a section that says fines shall be established and we buy a policy resolution or ordinance, and we, again, we removed all the the fines from the ordinance. And here's the immobilization and impounding of vehicles, this is regarding the boots. So when a vehicle is deemed abandoned pursuant to ten, twelve, one, ten of this title, or found parked or moving at any time on a street in the town against which there are three or more unsatisfied or unpaid parking summons. And at least thirty days have elapsed since the issuance of the third unsatisfied summons. The parking officer or police officer is then authorized to immobilize the vehicle with a tire-locking boot or tow the vehicle. Nothing's being changed, it's still three and above. We we are not making a recommendation on changing that, three tickets or more. The only addition here would be to use a boot. Nothing else is getting recommended change, and we do have other safety mechanisms in place. So after a person receives a fine after thirty days, Ms. Nail will send them a notification via mail, certified mail. So they have thirty more days to pay their parking ticket. So they receive not only this, the citation on their window, they'll also receive a letter from the town before we would boot or tow the vehicle. Let's see. And as I stated earlier, if you try to deface or break the boot, there'll be a fine of a hundred dollars and then the cost to replace the boot itself. Responsibility of the owner, the registered owner of the vehicle immobilized or impounded pursuant to this chapter who's booted or impounded. Their responsibility for all costs of the boot and impoundment when the vehicle was previously reported, and it's not when it's previously reported stolen. So if someone steals your vehicle and comes to town and we boot it or tow it, we will eat those fees, and that's how it's always been. Responsibility owner, I'm sorry, notice. So when a vehicle is booted, notification of the action shall be plainly displayed on the driver's side windshield or side window. The notice will include that the owner, person entitled possession has the right to contest the boot or the tow. The owner or person responsible shall have the right to have it boot, the boot removed immediately by waiving its rights at a hearing and writing and paying all outstanding fees, fines, penalties, and charges in the parking boot fee. The notice that the owner or person entitled possession does not contest the boot or pay all outstanding fines, penalties, and charges within forty-eight hours to posting the notice, the vehicle may be impounded. So we're gonna try to do the boot first, you know, we don't want to tell you right away, but if forty-eight hours elapsed, we we have a possibility of towing you.
There's a mention on page forty-seven to fifty-two of a hearing officer in an informal way, there's a.
Yes.
Is that staff or?
So that is actually how it's set up now. It was the mayor, one commissioners, a police department representative, or the town manager. The town attorney recommended scratching the police department representative, and it's still gonna be the mayor, one commissioner, and and or the town manager.
So if it's, will there be training related to that, so it's not capricious decision-making?
We can, I mean, I can talk with Leslie.
The way, yeah, the way it's written, actually doesn't say and or, it's either the mayor, one commissioner, or town manager.
Or, yeah.
Do we might want to consider adding another person to the hearing at least? So I'm just using this as an example, and I'm, I don't mean anything by this, but let's say somebody comes in and Ms. Willetts is going to do the hearing and maybe somebody's biased against Ms. Willetts, and will that come back? On us.
So I, yeah, I saw that or.
We feel more comfortable having.
I think there should be at least three people.
Three is a good number.
Because if there's a tie, you know, mayor, commissioner, one, one, we can add somebody if you'd like to commissioners, it still wouldn't be a quorum.
I I I'm I'm looking at this as not all around, resident-wise and and protecting town staff as well. I I can see an issue there potentially.
The other part is I really feel there needs to be some training as if one's going in like, well, my opinion's this, your opinion's that, there has to be some strict criteria, so the person feels that they have a means of recourse when they do go to, let's say, district court on the issue. So they feel that they've been heard and the the those sitting in judgment who are the officers, their bias isn't part of the equation. They think, I'm looking at this, here's, you know, it is satisfied these criteria and therefore tick, tick, tick. Unfortunately, you know, this is your circumstance.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to, I'll talk with Leslie about that. This has always been in the ordinance, we're just doing some updates.
Right, sure, sure.
And it's never happened.
Thank goodness.
So I'm not sure if people actually know that it's a, something that can be done, it's a step you can do before going to district court. It's basically, it's it's a, it's a mini court session in here, it's gonna be recorded, because that will then be used if they appeal your decision, they will go to district court.
I'm still looking forward to shooting livestock out of town, but we've lost that power now, if you recall, so.
And clean chimneys.
Yes. We're lucky.
But no, I noticed it wasn't bold, obviously, it's been there, but yeah, I I'm also thinking maybe now with the boot system in place, me, maybe, I don't know, I mean, we we never, we don't know.
What's your recommendation? Do you have any recommendations?
Don't look at me, you're the one who brought it up.
Do you want to keep police department representative?
President. Brought it up first. You brought it up first, so what?
Okay, so I would suggest training and I would suggest expanding those involved in the hearing at the town level.
We have to make sure it's not a quorum.
The the expansion would be, I believe, a commissioner, a mayor, and a staff member. I think that's sufficient.
That's what it is now.
That's how it is, you want to keep.
And what's the add-on that you're trying to look for, then, Mr. Ritz? Help me out here.
Okay, so it's it's mayor, one commissioner, or town manager, so it's one of the three as currently written.
No, it's two of the three.
Okay, so let's add the third.
Yeah, that's like, it's it's not clear how it's written, because it says, consisting of the following, mayor, one of the commissioners, or town manager. So you should, you should have all three.
Yes.
That way, there's no tie vote and you have everybody, yeah. So I think it's just the way that's written is confusing.
The mayor and it would either be a commissioner or the town manager.
So the mayor is always part of the equation, is what you're saying.
One of the, one of the two that would be presiding over the judgment, and it would either be a commissioner or town manager. I think essentially what we're all trying to say is we want it to be all three.
Correct.
Mayor, commissioner, and town manager.
Mr. Ritz, does that satisfy your intent?
Um, yeah, I mean, I like the three better, but I'm sorry, I didn't read it that way. The way I read it was just gonna be one person.
It's really how you read it. I read it as two. You know.
You you'd have to have three, so you don't have a tie vote.
Yeah, just go ahead and clear that up.
Okay.
Three people.
That's easy, yep.
Yep, three.
Good deal.
And training. Like some criteria, some standard of behavior, sorry, some standard of judgment, so we have the means by which we can adjudicate.
I'm sure Leslie can draw up a form.
Sure.
And then you guys can use that if if comes necessary. Yep, sure.
Any other suggestions from the board?
Where was I? I'm good there.
So I think we're okay to move on if.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where I'm at.
Still won't read it that way, but that's.
Okay. We pretty much went over everything else then.
Can we, oops, you're gonna shoot me, can we back up to?
Bang.
Page forty-two?
Sure.
And dash twelve dash oh nine oh.
Yes.
This isn't anything new. But it's almost unenforceable.
Lots of persons.
Which one?
Which one are you on?
It is unlawful for any person except persons who.
Forty-two or fifty-two.
Yeah, who have parking permits on East Main Street to park for more than two hours on any of the following streets. East Main Street, except for meters are installed, and West Main Street, except for meters are installed. Is that saying the people with un-metered areas can only stay stay there for two hours at a time?
Amy, do you know the answer to that?
Because I don't like it if it is, because you can't even have somebody come for Christmas dinner and they're in a parking violation.
I actually. Yeah.
She said, just so people at home, every street in town, you can park somewhere for two hours. It's forty-eight hours.
This one says two, right?
This, I think, I honestly think Commissioner Davis, I think this is for where it says to whom parking permits or parking signs have been granted to place. So isn't there, there's a doctor's office on West Main Street that has parking only? I think that's two-hour parking.
Yeah.
So you can't go in and just park in that spot that's reserved for the doctors for more than two hours.
You're right.
But you still have to pay the meters there also. Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. That, you're right, Kathy.
Yeah, that's what that's intended for.
I think you only have one sign on Main Street that says it's a two-hour parking. Everything else is forty-hour parking.
Correct.
Right.
Except for that one spot. So if we put it up in front of the fire hall or Palms and said two-hour parking only, then that's enforceable.
Right.
Okay, this doesn't affect the people that live on West Main Street where there's no meter. Okay, good.
No.
Good, I don't want them to be.
Nope.
Yeah.
There's also reference in several spots, the owner, this is a new addition, the owner of any vehicle in violation of this ordinance may be issued a citation.
Yeah, so she wanted to clean that up just to show that we have the authority to issue a citation for that violation.
I thought if it was in the I thought if it was in the ordinance and they were in violation, they'd be cited. It's 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 repeated several times.
Yeah.
The owner of any vehicle in violation of this ordinance may be issued a citation.
It's just a legal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mister, they may not be cited a citation.
Mr. Davis, bring this back to you. Is there any language that you want to see specifically or any modification you want to see? Or outcome you want to see, how about that?
Um.
Or have Ms. Powell review it perhaps?
Well, I think I I still not sure about the, if the meter doesn't work, because we don't have a overabundance of parking. So if somebody pulls in on a Saturday night and they get out and their meter doesn't work, then you gotta.
Right, after eight.
So it's, I I don't, that one, and there's a couple that I'd like to send to staff.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll follow up on what I'm getting at.
That's my presentation, unless you have any other questions tonight.
Okay.
And then just, yeah, let's shoot us an email and then we'll talk with the mayor and come to something.
So board, are we okay turning to agenda item number six? Which is a good response, sorry, yes. Okay, so we're not gonna turn to that, and therefore we now turn to the agenda for our, rather, are we okay that we move forward to set the agenda? I don't mean to.
No.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Golden and Ms. Willis, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Set agenda for fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget meeting, May sixteen, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty PM. Typically, this meeting, this is the single thing that we take on unless there's something extraordinary.
I do.
Staff, okay.
I have, number one would be the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract for consideration. Number two would be presentation review of fiscal year twenty-three town budget for consideration. Number three will be the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two oh six update to chapter two point five oh point three oh salary structure for fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah, they're all budget-related.
Right, so May sixteenth, this, just as a reminder, the budget must be passed by June thirtieth. Therefore, for the June sixth agenda. I have, I have several items, but depending on what happens at the May sixteenth meeting, we will postpone if it's budget-only. So June sixth agenda will be presentation and review of fiscal year twenty twenty-three town budget for consideration. Number two will be the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two oh six update to chapter two point five oh point three oh salary structure for fiscal year twenty-three. And then I have some additional items, if time permits at that meeting. Approval of policy twenty-two oh three Public Information Act for proactive disclosure of public records for consideration. This is the new state law that this has to be passed before July first. Number four would be to accept agreement and right-of-way dedication at five hundred East Main Street for consideration. Number five, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two oh one Community Legacy Grant Authorization for Consideration. Number six would be the item that was postponed tonight would be forward-proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two oh three zoning text amendment to chapter seventeen oh four, seventeen twenty, and seventeen forty-four to the Planning Commission and set a public hearing for July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three for consideration. And then finally, approval of street sweeping bid for consideration. After the May sixteenth meeting, we'll see where we are with the. After the May sixteenth meeting, we'll see where we are with the, the budget. And then we can readjust June sixth agenda at that time if need be.
Is the street sweeping bid pressing?
Like, no, that one, that, that can be postponed till July.
Okay. So there's a possibility for that one.
Right.
Okay, but the others are time sensitive, it seems. Obviously the budget is, but.
Number six. Um, yeah, and number six could be postponed again as well. Um, the other ones we would, we would like to get done at the June meeting.
Okay, um, one modification to the fiscal year twenty-three budget piece. Could part of that please be the, and I know this is given, but, uh, the pages thirty to thirty-two.
Yes. Yes. It'll be, yeah, I'm hoping to have those done tomorrow, tomorrow or, uh, Wednesday. So then they will be emailed and then.
I'm saying for public purposes, for transparency, that can we have a review or a, a presentation on those two pages before we go to the budget decision-making? So it's, it's as if you're picking up from where you were tonight, like where you're reviewing the budget. Like here's what the budget's gonna look like. Now that we have two more pages, we need to address those in a public forum. And then we go to evaluate the budget, what we want to see changed or modified if, if we do.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm quite confused.
Okay, here's what I'm asking for. You're getting two pages to us before this meeting.
Correct.
I'm asking that those two pages get presented in the meeting prior to the budget discussion. So for the public, they have the same opportunity to see.
This budget won't be posted on the website until the May sixteenth meeting anyway. But so everything will be posted at the same time. None of this, the budget was not posted prior to this meeting anyway.
Right, but what I'm saying is those two pages, just to have them presented in the meeting.
They'll be already part of it.
I understand that, but I think we, we need to give them.
What?
Like just, just attention, the same way we've given everything else attention. Like, right now, this is a shadowy thing. Like, we don't know what thirty and thirty-two are. Well, that's what I'm asking for, to make sure that they are, because I, I haven't heard that yet.
I did.
Then I totally missed that. Forgive me. Okay. Well, no, no, I, no, I understand that we're gonna get them, but what I want to make sure is they get, they get actually spoken about in the meeting.
They will be. They'll be, they'll be addressed as we go through the entire budget.
Okay.
We will, we will go over every single page of the budget, including the water and sewer, um, CIP.
What I was asking for is to have that done upfront.
That will be very confusing.
I understand that.
We need to get, okay.
The, the, the request was just so we have like total transparency on this. I know I'm being a nudge on this, but that's, that's what my intent had been. To get it done at the beginning of that agenda item. So when we address fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, the first thing we hear is this. I understand that, but what I'm saying is that we've gone through one through nine, we still have ten to cover. So I'm saying we've got one through nine, let's knock out number ten and then we go into the rest.
We haven't, uh, okay, that's fine. I'll do it, but I, we haven't gone through any of the budget yet, so.
Well, what, your, the presentation of.
The summary.
The summary.
The summary, it wouldn't have been included in the summary anyway. Cause it's just projections for the water and sewer. So it would have never been included in there. Um, we never have any of the summaries that the mayor presents. We don't, in that summary that the mayor read, it wouldn't have been in there anyway.
And I, I was trying to follow along with the mayor during his summary in, in the binder and I was having a really hard time.
It's, it's actually right in your binder, the, everything that he read.
The front page.
In the front page.
Yep, I, I didn't sound like he was doing other, I'm not saying what he was doing was wrong or, or, um, I'm not criticizing it. I just, it was a summary.
Yeah, and it's right here, this front page.
So I think next week.
Was everything that he read.
When?
Everything. Do you not have it?
I don't see anything like that.
Oh.
We don't have that.
This is my special page then, apparently.
We have, uh,
Okay.
A table.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, I'm not totally crazy.
So he always presents a summary at the beginning, um, just kind of overview of the budget. Um, it's my fault that this page was not included in your budget. I thought it was. And that's basically what he read off of. Um, I can also send this to you as well.
Very good. And again, nothing here is a crisis. We're just trying to to see. Okay, so these things having been said, uh, is there a motion to accept the budget? I'm sorry, the, to accept the agenda.
Looks good.
My good. What an efficient town in Frederick County.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, there's a second, very good. All in, any further discussion regarding the accepting of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Staff, any further comments related to this meeting? Commissioners, anything added for this meeting? Anything to add? Hearing none is. Sorry, yes, sir.
One thing we failed to mention was water bills are due May fifth.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that in mind, uh, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.